Yeah, with that, I will call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Litchfield Park to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible. First order of business is discussion of murals and the zoning code. Mr. Frock, I guess you're the, where the program, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, lead your members of the Plan Zoning Commission. So we will do a work-study session and then we have some guests here that would like to participate in the conversation regarding Shippo and maybe some other items tonight. So we'll jump into the work-study session. We have two members that are participating virtually. Commissioner Fraser and Commissioner Alvey are on the Zoom call. Assisting me tonight is, you know them, Maria and Rena. So pleased to be here tonight. So murals in the zoning code, we were approached a couple of months ago by the owner of the Thomas, who's present here tonight, about incorporating mural into the mixed-use project. The Thomas is located on the northeast corner of Indian School in Old Litchfield Road. You might recall that went through a development agreement and a zoning overlay process. I presented both of those items to Mayor and Council at their January meeting. Both the development agreement and the planned development overlay zoning were approved for that project. The owner went through DRB, some of you are familiar with that, project earlier this month. And now we'd like to discuss with you the owner's interest in potentially incorporating a mural somewhere on the Thomas. It would be on an existing building on the site. The owner has had a concept prepared by a local artist with different design options that we included in your packet. From a zoning code standpoint, there is no mention of murals. So we have no murals that exist in uncommercial buildings in the city. Signs are regulated, a mural will be considered a sign. Signs are regulated by Section 35 on Sun and Cove. Since there is no mention of murals, they are considered as not being permitted within the city. There is one known mural in the city. It's right across the plaza here on, in the recreation, city's recreation center. Rena took a photo of that for me a week or two ago. Tonight, we're seeking input from P and Z. If this is something you would like us to entertain in terms of zoning code, text amendment, if you want us to do more research, we have, we try to benchmark as other West Valley cities and Rena has been assisting me for the last month or two. We have benchmarked, we've gotten information from two of our sister cities, Avondale and Goodyear. Rena, do you mind just talking kind of conceptually about what you've learned from Avondale and Goodyear?
Yeah, no problem. Vice Chair and Commissioners, I looked into a few of our sister cities, like John said, Goodyear and Avondale. Goodyear, they, the city asked that the murals be approved with building plans if that option's available. Otherwise, planning would approve them. Avondale's approval process requires a fee and for applicants to go through a limited design review, which I imagine is similar to our DRB. Seems like both cities welcome murals, but they are adamant that the murals do not have a commercial message or any type of advertisement. So.
So we're open to some discussion. Brian's the owner applicant for the Thomas. We included the artist renderings as part of your packet. Staffs looked at those over the last month or two as we're getting ready for tonight. Some of them we think are very tastefully done. We're not used to murals in the Tchill Park, obviously. I am from different cities that I've worked on across Arizona, but we're looking for input from P and Z. If this is, again, the staff recommendation is up on the board, if this is something you want us to pursue further with some additional research. We were trying to get more information from some of our other cities that has not come through yet, but that's kind of where we're at.
Do you have the ability to put up on the screen?
It'll take, I, I can find it, but it'll take me a minute if you want me to pull that up.
Yeah, otherwise I could, I'm happy to share.
Yeah.
Would that be appropriate, just to share that?
Just.
Yeah, let me, give me a minute.
So my comment was, just to make sure, Litchfield Park Art Center. You know, it's, it's okay to have some writing on these murals. It would not denote a message, but just identify, have the identity of the site. I mean, I'm fine with that, but I'm just curious how much text and what, who would approve the text?
I mean, it has a banner up there.
Yeah.
Now, that, that's a banner that we have.
Okay.
Okay, so this didn't take as long as I thought. So this is what Brian provided to us. So this is the the wall on what would be the east facade of the sanctuary, if you can picture the Thomas. This is one concept that the artist came up with for the LPAC Litchfield Park Art Center. Concept two is, this one, I don't mean to be critical, I'm not an artist, that's a little busy. This one's a little bit easier, in my opinion, to decipher. The imagery is a little bit easier to read. That's concept two. And you can see the, the bottom of the screen, the, the artist, I don't care, I don't pretend to speak for her, but the imagery that she's pulling on the concept is actually taken from the photos below. Mural three is more of a landscape. So you can see that the top image. And then the actual, where she was getting her inspiration is on the bottom. And then mural four. That would be the, that's the rough sketch, she's calling it, and then her additional references found on the bottom. Mural five, another landscape. This is trying to pay homage to Litchfield Park heritage, the citrus trees, the the sunset, the mountains. So you can see the rough sketch and then the additional references. The logo on the bottom left was the original city logo when we incorporated as a city in 1987. And that was, that's, this is what was presented by Brian and part of your packet. I can scroll back up to the other options if you want to. If P and Z or anybody participating virtually would like to go back up and look at the other options.
So as I, as I understand it, what we're being asked right now, you're just testing the temperature of the water as to what the interest would be. Just me personally, right now, for those of you that don't know me, for the last thirty years, I've been the city attorney for the town of Guadalupe. I can tell you that two things, when you're going to have murals, if there's a religious connotation, nobody touches it. If there's a nice mural, nobody touches it. If you have a big blank wall, like we were just saying, it's a business, there will be graffiti on that wall. It's just, you know, the way it goes. I know years and years ago, the Rotary Club, Chuck Lake, I mean, he was long since passed, but he had a lot of land out toward the cash. He had been donating some land for local kids, so he sort of had an unofficial park over there. And there were some issues at the time. Anyway, the Rotary Club put in some money to put in sprinklers and whatever. And everything was flying and then one of the, whatever city it was, said, well, this is well and good, but you can't have the Virgin of Guadalupe statute and you can't have this others. And we said, the trouble with that is, that's why this thing has never been tagged in like ten years, you know? You take that away and it's going to be a real problem. Well, they, they worked it out somehow, but anyway, I'm just, I'm kind of looking at the main thing. Because I'm assuming if you have a Mexican restaurant and they're putting, doing a mural inside the restaurant, that's not what we're worrying about tonight. Because that's just, you go into a Mexican restaurant, there's almost always murals or it's very common for them to have murals. Don't know about having any outside, but I, you know, I'm kind of envisioning, you know, a Mexican restaurant and outside mural would, you know, maybe would blend. But beyond that, I don't know. I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to say because we've never had, you know, anything like that.
Vice Chair, Members of Commission, you're correct. Anything on the in, inside of whether it's the Thomas or Litchfield Marketplace, Litchfield Square, we would typically not be concerned with. Anything like this, granted, on, I don't have a site name for you on the Thomas, but the way the campus is laid out, this wall face is not visible public street. So that's a positive for the owner. Positive, I think, for the community that unless you're visiting the Thomas, you're probably not going to see the mural. It's internal facing, it's not visible from Old Litchfield Road, it's not visible from Indian School Road or Hill on the Way, but so, yeah, we're testing the waters. Seeing what comment your experience with Guadalupe is very appropriate to share that. So we appreciate that. If there's anything else that P and Z wants us to look at, if, if you want us to keep going.
Well, I'm assuming if it came to pass that the code was going to be amended to allow murals, then I'm guessing the next step would be if someone wanted to have a mural, they would be coming through design review.
Correct.
Because it would be something they were, they were doing.
Correct.
So I guess it's, I don't, I'm not inherently opposed to it. It kind of depends on, it's hard, it's hard for me to know right now because we're just getting the park part of our project done. When his restaurants come on board, you know, I could see some restaurants might really want something like that out, you know, or like looking here, you've got kind of a patio look to that. And, you know, so anyway, it's hard to, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm not. It would depend on where it was and what it was going to look like.
Yeah. We can do more research. There's a shopping center I frequent up in Arrowhead Ranch at least two, three times a week. Spend a fortune shopping there that they, it made me think of this on kind of a internal wall to the shopping center. It's up in Glendale. There are some, I believe they're metal appliques that have been added. There are imagery of southwestern themes. Cactus, I don't have a photo of it, cactus, I believe some animals and maybe mountains, but there are affix to one of the, it's not really a storefront, but it's a wall that when you're shopping in that center, it's there. It's, to me, it's tastefully done and I don't know if Glendale approved it or not, but we can snap photos of that and keep going with the research. If that's something that P and Z is interested in.
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. It's just, if, as things develop over here, you're probably, I'm assuming we're going to be getting requests for things that we've never had before because it just wasn't there. So
Right.
It doesn't, because the alternative is to leave it the way it is and then murals are not allowed. You know, so.
Just for clarification, if somebody came to the city and wanted a, a mural approved, at this point, because we don't have it in the code, they, it would be a one-off. Like to present this mural for your approval and it could still be approved, right?
Through the Vice Chair, technically no, because it's not allowed. We, we have no basis for, in our zoning code for what would we be reviewing? There, when you look at Section 35, which is the sign code, there's no reference to murals. So.
So by omission though, it maybe could come forth.
Our opinion through our city attorney and through me as the city planner is that we would have to go through a zoning code amendment first.
So to clarify, if, if right now we're just looking at the text amendment, which might address size, location, whatever, but the content of the murals, that's design review. So.
Correct. Yeah.
So is it possible for that wall to be painted and designed? And like I think in design one and three, there's a rectangular sign that's embedded as part of the mural itself that announces the name of the building itself. So that couldn't just be considered a sign, even though I, I realize it would be, you know, part, a huge wall with painting and technically I guess it is a mural, but we couldn't necessarily just kind of call it a a sign announcing what this building is? Is there any way that we could possibly do that and avoid having to address murals as a code?
Through the Vice Chair, Commissioner Alvey, that's something we could look at.
I just worry about being inundated with a number of people wanting murals and maybe even wanting to paint their garages and which I wouldn't go through designing review board, I know that, but I it just seems like it would make sense to be able to sort of get this through without having to allow murals at this point in time. I don't know. Does anyone think that in the future, there are going to be a lot of people who want to have murals on future buildings and things? Does anybody have any feedback on that?
Commissioner Fraser has his hand up on the, on the screen. Can we go to him first and then we'll, we'll circle back with you, Commissioner?
Thank you, John. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So John, when we were talking yesterday, we, I, I mentioned to you, are there anything, is there anything in the code that talks about the displays of public art in Litchfield? You know, I recognize that the mural is part of the Thomas and the Art Center. But to me, it's a, you know, they're very tastefully done. I think the aesthetics of them add to that building. I view it kind of as a display of public art as opposed to a sign announcing what that facility is. Is there anything about public art in our code?
Through the Vice Chair, Commissioner Fraser, that's something that I have not looked at, but we look at the zoning code and follow up with you on that. That's a good point.
You know, I, I'm, you know, seeing what has been put together for that wall and recognizing that it's an interior wall and it's not exterior and it doesn't point towards a street or, or homes. You know, given how tastefully it's done and that it would have to go through design review board. You know, I, I wouldn't say I'm pro-mural, but I, I, I think having the opportunity to add things like that, that add character to the city in a, in a tasteful way, you know, should be an option. You know, I think having the control of design review board, we're not going to see, you know, giant murals that, you know, distract or take away from the character of Litchfield, but you know, would, would simply add to it.
My, my only comment would be that if you don't have anything and you're allowing it at some point, then you, you will get some that people will not want. And they're going to, they, the argument is always you allow this. So if we have something in the code and there's some sort of process, then you, then it's easier to say, you know, exhibit A here was approved because of this, this and this. But what this particular person may be wanting to, to do does not fit within, you know, the, the scope. So I think, right now, we're at the very earliest stages. We're just talking about.
Correct. Right.
I'd be interested in knowing what some of the surrounding cities, what sort of criteria they have in their, their code.
I'm very interested in what was brought up about the display of public art. You know, I mean, even Goodyear paints its electrical boxes and, you know, there's, I think it's pretty tastefully done and adds a lot of vibrant color and interest.
Yeah, the electrical box phenomena, I've seen it in Avondale, Goodyear and Peoria have been doing that. Usually it's the switching boxes for the, at an arterial arterial intersection for the traffic signals. Okay, we'll keep working on this then. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is there, are there any other comments from anyone on this topic? Okay, I'm not seeing any or hearing any. So the next thing on our, this agenda is executive session. We're not having it. So our, our meeting tonight is divided into two parts. So can we get a motion to adjourn the work-study session?
So move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn the work-study. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Then moving on to the next item of business. See here. Okay. Okay, first of all, we have a call to the community. This is a time for citizens who would like to address this commission on any non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to asking staff to review the matter, asking what the matter be put on a future agenda or responding to criticism. Was there, are there any, anyone that wanted to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, looks like there aren't. So moving on, the next, the next item of business for A is approval of minutes. And the minutes, these are the March 12th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the March 12th, 2024 Plan Zoning Commission meeting.
We have a motion to approve. Is there, we have a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Minutes are, any name? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Now we move on to item B, which is establishment of a historic preservation program. We had some discussion on this at the, at the last meeting. So I, I've never gotten your name exactly. It's a Frock?
You got it.
That's it? Okay, good. I knew that all along. Just thought about it. Anyway, Mr. Frock, our city planner is going to fill us in on that.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This, you're correct. We introduced this item to you at your March meeting. I, I did have the, I guess I was decided my, had the wrong date before. May 16th is my wife's birthday and I just switched it. So here, here we are. We are at May 14th. Not the 16th, the 14th is significant. My dad died this day a long time ago. So here we are on May 14th. P and Z meeting. So at your March meeting, we discussed some of the initial work that we have been doing with potentially establishing a historic district section in our zoning code. I'll refresh the commission's memory and we do have some audience members who are interested in this topic. So we met with Shippo, the State Historic Preservation Office in March, in February. We scrambled to get agenda item together for your, your March meeting. And basically Shippo and they're here tonight, they'd like to speak. The, the initial ask was, does Litchfield Park want to become what's known as a certified local government, CLG? Frankly, for how old and established the city of Litchfield Park is, I'm kind of surprised we're not a CLG. But that, again, that's my, my humble opinion as a city planner. At your March meeting, we had asked, staff had asked you, can we keep working on this? Do more research. The consensus was reached, yeah, let's go ahead and initiate a text amendment. But you need to come back to us, do more research and come back to us with additional information. So here we are tonight with that. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to one of our guest speakers, Arianna Urban from the State Historic Preservation Office. She handed out, I've got a couple of extra copies, additional materials. So I'd like to turn it over to Arianna, let her speak.
Okay.
And then I've got, I'll fill in as needed.
All right.
Hi, Vice Chair, Ledyard, Members of the Commission. Thank you so much for, for having me. I'm just introduce myself. My name's Arianna Urban. I am the Certified Local Government Planner for the State Historic Preservation Office. And prior to this, I was the Historic Preservation Planner for the City of Mesa. So I am lucky to have some municipal experience as well and, and I'm able to really kind of get into the weeds with, with historic preservation planning at the, at the local level. So thank you for having me and thank you for entertaining your interest in historic preservation. Ah, gosh, I don't know where to start. Like, like John has said, this, this kind of all started, actually, this might have predated him. This all started about a year ago when city manager and the farm and ranch folks had us out to, up on the hill and we got to just take a look at the outside of some of the, some of the buildings up there in the complex and learn about what, what the plans are for the future. And we were blown away by, by the by the ingenuity and by the desire to take those, that historic property that is so historic to Litchfield Park and make it, and to return to the community and make it, make it something that, that can be used again and enjoyed again and, and brought back into, into, you know, one of its historic functions, which was to, to be a place to recreate and, and be a part of the community again. So you're already doing historic preservation. One of the things that we do in, in HP, we call it historic preservation, is really, is really reusing historic buildings. And so you know, whether you want to call it historic preservation or not, if that's totally okay. But, but preservation in many, many ways is about taking those parts of a community that give the community its character and its history. And, you know, what makes Litchfield Park, Litchfield Park? And we take those things in, in, in a historic preservation program and becoming a CLG, we, we identify those things and we look at ways that we can integrate planning strategies to make sure that those things remain relevant and useful to, to people today and also for, for future generations of folks to live in Litchfield Park. So you guys have a really incredible amount of historic resources and old stuff, right? Like, not, not everywhere in Arizona has buildings that date back to, to the beginning of, of the century. So you know, you've, you've got all the components here and, and it's exciting to, to be able to, to start to work with John and, and some council members and, and the wonderful Litchfield Park Historical Society folks to really figure out what, what a certified local government might look like. And let's see. And specifically, let's see, I have so much to talk about. Okay, um. Because, let me start with this. What, what, when we talk about a certified local government, really all that means, it sounds kind of government-y, but what it really means is a collaboration between a collaboration between us, between the state historic preservation officer, office and any local municipality who's interested in having a historic preservation program. And there it's, it doesn't involve any government oversight. It doesn't involve any hands being forced to do anything at all. It really is a, a positive way and a really effective way to, to make sure that, that local places get the attention that they need and the money that they need. There's also grant funding involved. And so the idea for certified local governments came around because originally when, in the 1960s, when sort of the American historic preservation structure was getting put together, it was the National Park Service and the states, and each state has a Shippo like we do. And that was it. And the, the park service would tell the states, do preservation, figure it out. And pretty quickly, within a decade or so, the states realized that it's impossible for one state office to do a good job preserving properties all over the state. And so this idea of the local government certification was born specifically to be able to tailor their historic preservation programs to a, to each unique place. And, and that's kind of what the meeting that I had in February was with, with everyone was really figuring out how and, and what a, a specific certified local government program in Litchfield Park like. And every time I, every time I go, whether I'm in Cave Creek or Dewey-Humboldt or wherever, I always say, you guys are the experts in Litchfield Park. I, I really, I love, I don't, I don't know that much about Litchfield Park yet. And I'm excited to learn, but I'm always going to come here to you, no matter, no matter what we're looking at with preservation and historic places. I'm always going to come to you and say, tell me about why it's important and tell me what it means to the people here and, and what it could mean in the future. And so this creation of a, of a certified local government can really look in most ways however you guys want it to, which is really exciting. And John's question, you know, why is Litchfield Park not a certified local government already? And, and the answer to that in my mind is because it sounds too governmenty, right? And it, it really does to, 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 to an untrained person. Just the words historic preservation can sound can sound like rights are being infringed upon and, you know, properties, private property is in danger. And so whenever I get anyone coming to me and saying, why historic preservation? You know, this is my property. I go, it's gonna be okay. Like historic preservation is not scary. Like we can all just calm, be calm. And, and I, I get to teach people about all the great things about historic preservation. So in looking at creating a certified local government, there are a couple of requirements that we have as the state. I, please stop me if this has already been gone over at the last meeting. I apologize. I wasn't able to be here. But the big thing that's required is, is an ordinance. It's a, is a text amendment to, to codify the historic preservation program. And like I said, that can be tailored to a very specific local government and their, their specific needs and population and historic resources. And John has been working on that. I think you guys talked about it at the last meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions about, about what might or might not be in a Litchfield Park ordinance, along with John, of course. And within that ordinance, we establish a historic preservation commission. And I know some of the historical society folks have been excited about or interested in, in maybe volunteering to do that as well. So there does need to be a, a commission that, that advises property owners and city staff and, you know, the planning and zoning board and, and the city council on matters relating to preservation. And there does need to be some system of recognition for historic properties. And, and we're looking at what the, the existing historic preservation overlay districts looks like now, what it might look like in the future, but that would, that would fulfill that requirement. And then there's also a need for surveying and inventorying, just really getting out there and driving around and pointing at buildings and, and getting an idea of, of what the historic resources are in, in Litchfield Park. So yeah, I mean, when, when a, when a community becomes a CLG, they're like, who cares? We're a CLG. And I go, no, no, no. We, we at the state, actually, I mean, it is literally my job to, to assist the certified local governments in, in historic preservation planning. And it, it involves, I'm, I'm available whenever you might need me to come out and look at a site with you or to, to, you know, double check a staff report or, you know, come and do training for any historic preservation board, or I, I do trainings for designer review boards and planning and zoning boards. And I do trainings for neighborhood organizations and, and the public as well. So just being able to sort of spread the word about historic preservation is, is a big part of my job. And like I said, surveying those properties and really understanding what we have in Litchfield Park is super important because and Margaret and I were talking about this, the, the next step to, to that can often be designating a property on the National Register of Historic Places, which is an honorary designation as well and does not involve any, any property rights infringement or, or anything like that. It really is just, just an inclusion in that honorary list for, for, for the places that are important to the country. And Litchfield Park is undoubtedly important to, to the nation with, you know, World War II and agriculture and early recreating. And there's, there's so many things out here that, that are really, really significant and we would love to, to help nominate to the National Register of Historic Places. And I guess the last thing I'll just talk about is, is grant funding. We have about $20,000 each year to, I'm sorry, we have about five times $20,000 each year to distribute to all the certified local governments who have a historic preservation planning project that they would like to do. And that can be the establishment of a historic preservation plan. Sort of like a mini general plan, but just for historic preservation or historic preservation guidelines for, for historic properties or writing a national register nomination or hiring a consultant to do a survey. There's money. There's money for, for doing preservation planning to the certified local government. So that's usually, that's, that's usually a big draw too. So yeah, just, you know, ultimately we see, we see communities when they become CLGs, they really, what it's really about is creating this sense of community and maintaining the, the sense of community you guys have because each time a historic building or any sort of historic resource is lost, that's it. It, it is irreplaceable. It doesn't come back and you lose a little piece of Litchfield Park every time that happens. And so really preserving, not historic preservation, but really community preservation and, and culture, pres- cultural preservation. And just a sense, getting, maintaining this, this sense of place that, that is really so special to Litchfield Park. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions you guys might have. Thank you for, for listening.
I will surrender to, are we still in work session or works taking?
No, we're.
We are, okay. You want to just continue on then since we know where we are?
Okay. Are there any, any questions? Here we go.
Does your historic preservation, we did allow murals? I'm just kidding.
Yes, we love murals, you know.
All right. So in, 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 it's just, thinking about it, I think the designation sounds wonderful. Now, I'm not, not smart enough to truly understand what the benefit is.
Yeah.
Can you give an example of just start to end of like, what would be the benefit to a building to the city, to the residents?
Yeah, Vice Chair Ledyard, Commissioner O'Connor. That's a great question. And, and designation can mean a lot of different things. In, in Phoenix, for example, a designation for the city of Phoenix literally means the zoning overlay. And anytime you want to change the outside of your house, you are required to go to the city of Phoenix and get approval to do that. That is absolutely not what we are thinking about in Litchfield Park. It, the, the designation would be, would be honorary. It would be celebratory more than anything else. You know, it would probably involve street signs and some sort of community gathering to, to celebrate the, the designation of a, of a historic property or historic district. Sometimes we call them heritage properties or heritage districts and said to kind of separate that the, the types of designation. And it, you know, designating, when we look at commercial properties, we can, you know, make a brochure and a map of, of all the designated historic properties in Litchfield Park. And something like that can engender economic development. And it, you know, it, it kind of gets a ball rolling and, and it, it lets these property know, property owners know that they have something special. And then of course, if, if any of those property owners ever would like advice or guidance for how to remodel or maintain or, or adapt their historic property, then the historic preservation board and John and myself can all help with that.
So, so pretend you, you own this old church that you're redeveloping.
Yeah.
How is it helpful to that owner?
Uh, Vice Chair Ledyard, Commissioner O'Connor, I mean, it, it might not be. I, you know, I, I don't want to sit here and make promises that, that historic preservation can't keep, but I, you know, I would say that it really, really just being able to kind of tap into to what historic preservation is and kind of understanding, kind of understanding the history of that church. And, and really what we would like to do if, if the church is undergoing an adaptive project is to make sure that we, or to at least attempt to maintain some of those characteristics, we call them character defining features of, of the property, those, those pieces of, of the property that really like communicate its historic character. So the, the concrete and this, the roof pitch and the details and things like that. So we, we would, we would want to, we would want to try and work with that property owner to, to preserve as many of those historic characteristics as possible.
On your website, it talks about one owner who did not want to be a part of this. So wanted some recognition, but did not want to be included as historic property. So is it optional? You do the survey and then you talk to the owners and it's optional whether they participate or not. Is that correct?
Yeah, Vice Chair Ledyard, Commissioner Lawrence, that, that's true. Sometimes we do see zoning overlays with little holes in them. And that's, that is what it is. There's, there's no way to force a property owner to participate. That, that's not in the spirit of historic preservation, especially in Arizona. So, yes.
Okay, does anyone in the audience have any questions? There you go. Okay. Margaret Baker.
May I defer to Lisa Hagerty to speak for this, please, from the Heritage Center.
Okay. Okay.
There are the opportunities.
Vice Chair, Commissioner, my name is Lisa Hagerty. I'm the executive director of the Litchfield Heritage Center. And I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you today. And just on behalf of our organization, we just want to express our support for Litchfield Park's efforts to maybe establish a historic preservation program. We would definitely support that. When we look around at the majority of the public buildings and businesses in Litchfield Park, we see a lot of historical significance, a lot of history, a lot of stories tied to those buildings. And those are certainly on our very local level, but they have implications with our national state, international history. So you know, this town, of course, holds a lot of significant history and some of the more interesting and significant stories in the state. We also have works by notable architects within our walls, Benny Gonzalez, who's arcade along the businesses on Old Litchfield Road, his design, a notable architect. Also Reginald Johnson, who is credited with having designed the original St. Thomas Aquinas Church. He himself has work on the National Register of Historic Places in California. He is credited with defining the California style of architecture in the twenties. So we do have a wealth of resources and we see this opportunity to promote historic preservation as an opportunity, not only to protect and preserve, but also to educate. I think it just creates a whole nother level of awareness about what we have. When we can point to something physical, information signage, a plaque, a designation, it creates a whole new level of appreciation for what we do have. It can set us up as a model for other cities within the region. And it's, you know, it, it's a, it's a point of pride and it just kind of deepens our appreciation for where we live. And it also is of course, meaning, maintaining, helping to maintain those tangible links to our history. You can look at that building and, and you know, know that it's been standing since however, you know, how long it's been standing and know there's a tangible link to the origins of the town and what that means and what, what does it mean to be a company town? And what does that mean? You know, what is Litchfield Park as a company town compared to other company towns? Just, there's just so many threads of history and a lot of that is represented in our buildings. And I will just say that, you know, our organ, organization is in kind of in its infancy in exploring what it takes or what that involves historic preservation. We're becoming more aware of the opportunities that are out there that exist through preservation. We recently were involved in the effort to get the historic Towee We Ranch located at Litchfield and Olive on the National Historic Register. The outcome of that process is still unknown, but it was a very valuable process. We uncovered history that was new to us. I mean, we knew a fair amount, but that process of discovery really amplifies your appreciation for what you have. And really uncovers the value of what you have. And so I just think taking the time, going through that process, doing the homework, doing the research, giving that designation to places really can have a profound effect on how people view their community. And that can have implications economically, that can have implications on tourism. It can become an even stronger draw for people. People are already drawn to Litchfield Park. They may not understand why. They just know it feels different. But if we do the homework and we do the research and we designate these places, we'll be able to tell people this is why it's different. This is why it's special. It represents a lot of different movements in thought and design. And, and, and it's, it represents the work of of significant individuals and has ties to significant eras in our history. So you know, we wholeheartedly support any effort that the city wants to do to make sure that some of these things are preserved. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I have two others. Ms. Baker, would you like?
I'm Margaret Baker, a longtime resident of Litchfield Park. And I've been participating in historic preservation organizations for probably 30 years or so in town. And we didn't have anything really out here. Our historical society was very small and wasn't really attempting to do anything much in the way of historic preservation. And I just would suggest you drive around in Phoenix. I think Phoenix has at least 22 historic neighborhoods and they have these pamphlets for the maps to drive through them. And for example, the, the Encanto neighborhoods, those small homes, the kind, the kind of money they get for those homes. You know, I have friends who do live in historic homes and the plaques are on the wall and says when it was built and who lived there first, if they wish to. I mean, some owners, of course, do not want to have that on their home. But I, Arianna didn't mention, I believe there is a state of Arizona tax credit program that your taxes for your home or property, do you want to? Are reduced by half if you do live in, in a building, home that is listed on the register. So that's the challenge to get it listed on the register. And there are hoops to go through. And, and yes, I led the effort to try to get the Towee We Ranch on the National Register. And we've been. Try to get the Tauwiwi Ranch on the National Register and we've been amazingly successful with that. Uh, no one knew anything about it except me that grew grew up around it and. It's just really very important for a town's pride of place, Florence, Arizona. Where my father was born, I think has the largest historic district, I think, Mr. Ledyard, you have some knowledge of Florence, Arizona. And the largest historic district and people just flock to these. Neighborhoods and places to go to see these these places that are recognized, so I just really encourage you all and. Try to help move this forward and have Litchfield Park establish a historic preservation program.
Thank you. And the last request to speak is Anne Donahue.
I guess there are rules. I'm here today as a citizen and not an elected official. So actually, this, I hope I'm just going to put the icing on the cake with all this, so. I attended the PW Heritage Center, that's our Historical Society annual meeting, and the President of SHIPA was there speaking. And I'm sitting in the audience thinking, we don't have this? And I mentioned that because, and then she also, what was interesting is. She was telling everybody, really, it wasn't even the Historical Society, it's the city, you need city people here and you need this, well, in the meantime, she didn't know the mayor. Councilman Brainerd Watson and myself were there, so when we came up at the end, she was like, oh, hi. In the meantime. What I agree with Lisa about educating, so I've lived here thirty-one years. I had no idea, it's probably been the last five years that I've learned any history about Litchfield Park. My husband John's now a docent, and we have lots of people saying, you mean that church is not on the Historic Register? No, it's not even on the state register. You mean the, you know, Paul Litchfield's house? And just last week, we had SHIPA's group come in and look at Paul Litchfield's house, including their architect and so forth. And they've mentioned that this should be on the National Register, I mean, that's huge, but it's a huge application process, huge. You know, basically homework assignment to find all that info, but here's what I've been saying. From my spot on the city council for the last seven years, when I talked to groups, when that home is done up there and finished. It's absolutely going to be a draw, in my opinion, people, historic historians especially, get off the plane, they'll go to the herd and they'll come right up here. We have incredible culture here, we have to recognize and preserve it. And you know what, Deborah, I think you mentioned residential and people get nervous about that, but I remember Ariana saying at the beginning. We're not even going to really talk about that at this point, we just, we only have seven, what, seven properties right now that are commercial properties? That we really should recognize, so I think it's, I mean, as a citizen, I think it's a slam dunk. But certainly, we're glad you had questions, and again, I think most of the new people that have moved here. Honestly, well, heck, they don't even know they don't pay property tax, just telling you that, they have no clue. But I really do think that we really will not only educate our citizens, but we'll have people that will come out here and they'll want to go to the hill, and then guess what? They're gonna want to just drive by and have lunch at the Wigwam and so forth, so. That's my spiel, and hopefully. We we finish, and or Ariana's here if you have any other questions.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any, any questions or comments? Any of our folks that are on Zoom?
Just the status from our last meeting to this meeting, next step.
Okay. I think the, the next thing is to talk about, according to our agenda, is to talk about a zoning amendment for Litchfield Square, I'm assuming. That that will be in line with this, is that correct or not?
Yeah, so the the last point that staff has is is up on your screen, so just to repressure your March twelfth meeting. You initiated the zoning code amendment. To allow staff to keep going on the, looking at historic preservation. Based on tonight's discussion, we would keep going with that program. And at your next available meeting, we would actually produce a, I don't think you'd be voting that night. But you, we would be producing. Uh, as part of the agenda packet, a draft zoning ordinance. That we would then present to you for your consideration, again, probably because of the. Commentary and input that we have from P and Z at your March meeting, and then tonight, we would probably not be asking for you to vote that night. But just get something on the books for you to review and study and make sure that we're still moving in the right direction.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments, staff? Okay, well, it looks like. Now, we have. If there are, no other comments or questions, it appears we should be moving on to item six, which staff reported on the current event.
I'm sorry, I might have misunderstood what, we do have another presentation, this, if we're done with historic preservation, we have another.
Okay, that was.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right, let's go ahead then. So we're talking about a zoning amendment for Litchfield Square, or Mr. Focus, the planner will.
Correct. Just for our audience, we're done discussing historic preservation for the night, you're welcome to stay and. Learn more about Litchfield Square or your.
Workstation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we have another project we'd like to work on with P and Z. Uh, this is related to Litchfield Square, that's a council priority. Uh, project in terms of staff resources and city resources in terms of. The development that's occurring just across the street at the square. Just a little bit of the background, over the past fifteen to twenty years, the city was assembling. Properties. From various. Individuals and property owners. Uh, for the future development of what was then known as City Center, and then through a recent marketing and branding campaign. The project was renamed Litchfield Square or the Square. So, since that time, the city has taken on the role of being the master developer, which is somewhat unique. We've been funding, the city has, I don't know, the cost to plan, design, construct all the infrastructure that you can see. Uh, from this building. Uh, related to the square. Uh, I am managing that project, as you know, for the city, getting a lot of help from our city engineer or building official. And from city management. We're expecting Aiken Gardner as our general contractor, we're expecting that they're going to be wrapping up. Uh, the infrastructure work around Labor Day weekend, so stay tuned for more information on, on that. Related to the planning efforts for City Center or for Litchfield Square is in twenty nineteen. The city processed a zoning code text amendment that created the City Center or CTR zoning district. A subsequent zoning change for all that property. For the square was completed, and I've got a zoning map that I'll show you materially. Just a little bit of a background, you've heard some of this from me before, either here or at DRB, Lot Eight is being developed as Litchfield Square Park. Lot Three was sold to a private developer back in twenty twenty-two, and we're working with that entity, they're a local. Here in Litchfield Park. On their development plans, some of you have seen their plans at the DRB level back in November. And most recently, the city manager, he's released a new RFP. To sell the remaining lots, so I'd like to get into, this is a zoning map, just for contextual purposes. We're sitting right here. Uh, and just across the street in the purple is the square, Zone CTR. This is, I think you've seen this image from me before, so this is an aerial photo, it's somewhat dated. Um, because a lot of the infrastructure's been put in, but the lot numbers are from the final, there is a recorded final plaque. Uh, that the city processed a few years ago, so the the lot numbers correspond to the final plaque. So Lot Three has been sold, there is a agenda item, I'll be in front of council tomorrow night. Uh, on a number of different projects that I'm working on, the city manager has an item, the city is looking to sell Lot Four. To the entity that bought Lot Three a couple of years ago. Uh, Lot Eight is the park, that's, if you go out to the square, you can see. The progresses that is being made by Aiken Gardner and all of their subcontractors. City Hall is on Lot Fifteen. And some of the parking for City Hall is on Lot Fourteen. Everybody's favorite roundabout, you can see up on Litchfield Road at Village Parkway. And the eastern boundary of the square is Old Litchfield Road, which is Lot Five. And then obviously Wigwam Boulevard to the south. Uh, to the north is Scout Park and Scout Lodge, one of the projects we're working on is actually to move Scout Lodge a few hundred feet. Actually take the building up and move it onto the north side of. Fairway Drive and put it up into. Scout Park, probably somewhere in here, so that's a project that we're working on, city manager. Um, getting back to the City Center zoning amendment. One of the restrictions, this map might be, it's from Woody. Uh, when Woody was still with the city, but the the map showed there's a height restriction, and that's really what's caused, what's. Precipitating the request to amend the zoning for Litchfield Square is the zoning. Uh, has certain height restrictions and what we're finding since we've sold Lot Three. We had a prior developer. I should have mentioned this before, that. Uh, the city had a prior RFP in twenty twenty-two and the. Group that was selected was a Scottsdale-based developer called Catclaw Investments. We didn't get very far, there was no DRB submittal with Catclaw. The council voted at their March meeting to cancel the LOI with Catclaw and just start over with the new RFP, I should have mentioned that before, but. The Catclaw group is looking to buy in lots one, two, four. Five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen. And that's a lot of, this is a very complex project and. Through the course of working with. That company for about a year and a half, we, they they wanted to do four-story buildings, which we thought were. Not really in character with the, with the city in general and certainly not with the square, so. The council canceled the LOA, like I said, in March, and. The city manager's office reissued the RFP, it's an active RFP. We're starting to get develop an interest on any of the remaining parcels with the exception of Lot. Eight and Lot Fifteen are available if somebody wants to make a. And and offer and respond to the RFP. Getting back to the building height, so the current CTR zoning is pretty restrictive. And I'll walk P and Z through that tonight, so. Uh, two-story maximum. Is required on portions of Lot Eleven and Twelve down here, this Litchfield Road at Wigwam. Lot Fourteen and Fifteen, which is basically the City Hall complex, is limited to two stories. And then way up north on lots. Portion of Lot Two and most of Lot Three. Um, is limited to two-story. Anywhere else in the square, the building height would be three stories or four feet. In kind of analyzing, now that we've had this on in place for almost five years and we started to develop the square, put in the infrastructure. And met with a lot of different. Development groups, marketing people. Uh, consultants, we feel like we probably need to adjust the zoning a little bit. Um, mostly related to building heights, for instance, Lot One and Two. This probably shows it better, the cache neighborhood. This is fully built now, northwest corner of Village Parkway and Litchfield Road. Those are two-story, very attractive condominium units. That went through the city process through zoning and DRB a number of years ago. Lots One and Two to be consistent with the cache neighborhood. Maybe Lots One and Two should be limited to two-story. Today, if I go back to toggle back to the map. Lot One would would allow a fifty-four foot height. Uh, building height. Lots Eleven and Twelve. If you can picture the underpass that the city built, I think about fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago, there's a significant right of way. To accommodate the underpass. The church on the southeast corner of Wigwam Boulevard and Litchfield Road is set back pretty far. We were thinking that maybe Lots Eleven, Twelve, Nine and Ten would be a good candidate for. Allowing that fifty-four foot height, right now, the way the zoning is. A portion of Lot Eleven, which is here. And a portion, most of, actually all, most of Lot Twelve, this is part of Lot Twelve. Is limited to two stories, so we're thinking, we'd like the commission's. Input on on how we formulate a zoning amendment for the square. Um, same thing with Lot Fourteen is, we we would probably keep fourteen and fifteen with the two-story. Height limit, the the neighborhood just west of us where we're sitting tonight. Are all single-story, we probably want to keep lots thirteen and fourteen as. Uh, the lower height, elsewhere in the square, I think the, we think the fifty-four feet would be okay. We're seeking your input tonight in direction, one, asking that you initiate the text amendment so we can keep going on this and do more research and come back to you at a future P and Z date. And would welcome any input that, your observations, you all live in. Litchfield Park, you're you. Very familiar with the square, any input. Uh, that you would have tonight that we can take back and consider as part of our proposal.
There's a point of clarification, when you're talking about the new RFP that's out, you said something about Lot Eight?
Correct, Lot Eight, we would keep that, right, we would keep that in perpetuity for Litchfield Square Park.
Right, and then you mentioned one other lot. Fifteen?
Uh, Fifteen is City Hall.
Right.
Uh, that would not be part of the RFP.
Okay.
And probably, uh, in, now that we've had the final plat recorded for a few years. We're getting input from prospective buyers that maybe Lot Thirteen is, I'm I'm just using this as an example. Maybe it's not configured properly, it might be too shallow. The feedback we're getting from people that might be interested in developing in the square is. You've got such a great amenity with the park. We would like to front our project, whether it's ground floor retail with condominium units for sale above. We might need a little bit more depth, so maybe this lot line needs to move, so. We are also, this would not be part of the zoning amendment, but we're also looking at potentially amending the final plat. Or having the prospective buyer, for instance, the. The entity buys Lot Four that already owns Lot Three. They would probably combine those lots and eliminate. This property line just so there's no encumbrance on the property. Five, six and seven, to use an old Phoenix term, a super block. If somebody came in and wanted to develop on lots five, six and seven, they would probably want to eliminate. These two lot lines, we don't allow buildings to spread a little property. A legal property line, and so. Sorry if I confused commission, but no, Lot Eight would not, not be owned, okay?
And Lot Fifteen, where City Hall is, somebody couldn't buy that lot and expand City Hall, like to the back, keep it a facade in the front?
Correct, the, I think in the broader sense, the the city manager's idea is that. That building will always be a building. Will it always be City Hall? Maybe not, maybe it could be a restaurant. It's got such great. History, some of the furniture is there. It's got such great history. Some of the furnitures are Goodyear Farms. Desks and chairs that have been sitting in that building for eighty, eighty years. So we're so entrenched with the city operations in lot fifteen, it will probably not be on the market anytime soon.
Lot four, were you saying you're going to limit that to two stories?
Chair, members of the commission. So yeah, lot, so the, some of you were here when I presented the DRB package for lot three back in, at your, at the November DRB meeting. Lot three is approved for a two story mixed use building. Lot four would, in all likelihood, we would keep that as a two story height restriction.
Said, keep it as a two story. It doesn't look like the whole thing is two story, right?
Correct.
So we would be changing proportionate to two story. So one, two and four, you're proposing we move to two story and then eleven and twelve move to three story or whatever fifty four feet is?
We, we would come up with some, this is a hand drawn exhibit. We would come back to you as we, one, get your input. We would come back with a, a more definitive exhibit. Probably have our consultant draw something up so that it's a little bit clearer. So that both P and Z, as well as anybody in the public, would, would understand what we're trying to do. We need to do, conduct neighborhood work. We would not do that. We, that, that's a step down the line. We'd want to, we would host the neighborhood meeting for this or neighborhood outreach efforts. We're doing that on Camelback Park. We have an agenda item that we'll be presenting for you, to you in June. You might remember you initiated that zoning case on the city owned property of the Dyser and Camelback back in December. So we, we would do neighborhood outreach before we come back with asking you to vote on anything.
Was it lot, I thought lot four was like a parking lot?
So Chair, Commissioner O'Connor, the approved site plan for lot three. And the reason I don't really like using this exhibit is that some of the parking is changing as the property is being developed as part of the infrastructure. But yeah, lot four is pretty much a parking lot.
So is it, you want to allow for more development on it?
We don't know what, what the, if the buyer comes through, we, we don't know what their plans might be for it, but a majority of lot four would be for parking.
So what action are you looking for us to do?
Basically, if the commission's comfortable tonight, it, it would not be a vote because you're, it'd be basically be consensus to initiate, formally initiate a zoning amendment. And then like you did back in December for Camelback Park and then in March for the historic districts. So basically Andrew's got his hand up. I think he wants to speak.
Thanks, Sean. You can continue if you wanted to finish your thought, but I just had a general question. From your opinion and, and talking with developers, does the current zoning situation really hamper the marketability of these properties? And so we're not finding that we're, the city is receiving offers due to the existing zoning and that this is really something the city needs to pursue in order to get competitive offers for these parcels?
Chair, Commissioner Fraser, it, it, it has come up as an issue. I'm going to go back to the, the aerial photos. So we are getting, since the RFP was issued by the city manager's office, we are getting a lot of interest from developers on particular parcels. No RFP, with the exception of lot four, no submittals have been made in terms of like offers. We, we have heard, I'm going to go back to the map regarding the building heights. We have heard concern may be a little strong on, hey, what can I build and how high can I go? The staff has been steadfast that we feel like the, the baseline for the tallest structures that the city would allow in the square would be what's already on the books, three story fifty four feet. But we feel like we need to maybe tweak the building height map, if you will. If you look at the city center zoning, there's a little caveat in the zoning code of the city center district that talks about within a certain distance of Fairway Drive and Wigwam that you're limited to two stories. So long answer to the question is, yeah, we think that we're better off if we go through this amendment process and have a little bit cleaner building height exhibit, if you will.
Are there any, any other questions from anyone for staff comments? So are you looking for an actual motion or?
I, I think we need a motion.
Motion just to direct staff?
Correct. So we can keep going. Yeah.
All right. Someone like to make that motion?
Sure. I'll motion that we direct staff to continue forward considering this amendment to the city center zoning regarding the height restrictions.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Discussion?
There can be.
Yeah. My only concern, and I don't, my only concern is, is the, the adjacent homeowners that have the expectation that it won't change. So I think that would be, I would want to advise that staff reach out to them at the very beginning here. It'd be changing, it would be getting shorter, correct, to height becoming down next to homeowners.
Correct. I mean, we, we would, like on Camelback Park, Rena and I, as we're leading up to your June meeting, we've done a neighborhood notice. We're going to be posting the property with signs, similar to what we did with the Thomas. There's a legal ad going out in the, the local newspaper, I believe on May twenty four. So these are all things that we would be doing as part of the normal zoning process.
Hey, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to direct staff to proceed with putting together the possible zoning amendment. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. There are none and the motion passes. Wigwam, we don't have an executive session. And now we're at number six, which is staff report on current events.
Yeah, I have a couple of items. Rena, Maria, do you have anything you want to add? Okay. Some of you have heard this. I'm going to be moving, so to Minnesota. I'm going to be vacating my position here. So last year, my wife and I bought a house in Minnesota thinking it was going to be a vacation home. And she's anxious to get up there to, both of our kids were born here in Arizona, but they, they up and got married and moved to, both moved to Minnesota with their wives. So I'm going to be leaving this position, unfortunately, and it's bittersweet. So there, the city is recruiting for a new city planner. I will still be here for another, probably six weeks. But I wanted to advise, some of you heard this at the DRB meeting. So anyways, it's been a pleasure working with you since 2022 and I didn't expect to be having this conversation with you till probably 2025 or 2026. So I wanted to let you know that we're going to be finding, the city will be finding a, a new city planner.
Good for you.
Did not ask our permission.
No, I didn't.
But thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. It's been a great couple of years and I learned how to drive out here a long time ago. Dad worked out here a long time ago for about fifteen years. So yeah, it's going to be tough. So thank you.
Okay. Any, any other staff reports?
No, I don't. I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to commissioners' reports on current events. Do any of the commissioners have any? Don't see any volunteers. I'm assuming none. We have a motion to adjourn them.
Move the adjourn.
So a second?
Sure.
A second. Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Opposed, none. So.
I think he's already adjourned.
Yeah.